Dollars each, so total is hundred dollars. Any questions of the accounts payable? I'll look for a motion to approve then.
Mr. Chairman, I would move to pay the accounts payable as submitted.
I'll second that.
Motion second. And we'll call vote, Commissioner Masser.
Aye.
Commissioner Marsh.
Aye.
Commissioner White.
Aye.
Commissioner Claris.
Aye.
Chair votes aye, motion carried. Okay, so we go with the park board items. You have to prove that the bills have been all through the call table, right? Only thing with items is the motion then, right? Commissioner White, you want to make your motion or?
I am, I will. So I'll make the motion from the park board meeting for one point five million dollars over five years.
That would come out of the general fund, is that correct?
Correct.
Yeah.
Right?
Three hundred thousand a year, correct?
Three hundred thousand a year.
I'll second that.
Motion is second, any other discussion? Not roll call vote, then Commissioner White.
Aye.
Commissioner Masser.
Aye.
Commissioner Claris.
Aye.
Commissioner Marsh.
Aye.
Chair votes aye, motion carried. Next, we have the National County Government Month, that's from April two thousand twenty-four, there's a resolution needs to be signed by the chair. It's all in your packet, I guess you.
Mr. Chairman, I would move that we authorize the chairman to sign the National County Government Month for April.
Okay, have a motion.
Mission proclamation.
Second.
Second. All in favor, state aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, motion carried. Next, we have years of service recognition.
Years of service that we've been with the county, and first we have Myron Chink, ten years of county.
Smile.
I'd kind of like to make a little comment, you know, with with the dedicated staff we got at the road department. You know, a couple of years ago, I asked Myron to be our safety guy, so Myron's led that for the last couple of years. Every Tuesday morning faithfully, he picks out a topic, we talk about it, you know, and I think that's very important, you know, safety, everything we do is all about safety. And one thing to say about Chad, too, we help the volunteer fire with water a lot. And if Chad's around, Chad will always go, whether it's the middle of the night, or a Sunday, or Saturday, and and along with a lot of our other crew, all they need is a phone call to go. So sometimes we don't appreciate our help enough, but I can't say enough about our road department, they're they're a very good bunch of guys, and they're always willing to step up to the plate. You know, when it comes to fighting fire, you know, that extra load of water that we get out there, and a real fire really appreciates it because, you know, you can't fight a fire without water, so what? I'd like to thank these guys. And another thing, Myron also did this past winter is he's kind of stepped up the plate, you know, we, the CDL thing is a is a big deal, you know, you got to have a trainer to train your CDL drivers, you know. You talk, you hear about all these high dollar classes, you got to send them to, well, Myron stepped up to the plate, did what he needed to now, so we have a young gentleman working for us in Richardson. He actually, Myron's been kind of mentoring him along, and now he's about ready to take his test, and we didn't have that four or five thousand dollar training, or, I mean, you hear all kinds of things, but so, I want to thank Myron for that, too, because that's, it's important for us, because, you know, after a while, we run out of these CDL drivers, and and you just can't go get a license like you used to. So once again, I want to thank Myron for stepping up and doing that, and thank my staff, thanks.
Thank you.
Thanks, Myron.
Okay, next up is Sheriff's Department, Corey Lee.
Chairman Commissioners, good morning. Highlights for Stark County Sheriff's Department for the month of March twenty twenty-four. Total calls for service fifteen sixty-seven, this is down from one thousand six hundred fifty-four last year, two hundred forty-one traffic stops, this is up from two hundred and six last year, three hundred ninety-seven public relations stops, this is up from three hundred eighty-nine last year, twenty-five bar checks, it's up from twenty-two last year, six theft-related calls for services, that's down from ten last year. We had twenty-three K nine usages, or six truck reglet regulatory stops, easy for me to say, and she participated in twenty-eight additional calls for service, responded to nine accidents, which was quite low for considering the weather last month, a couple of spots. One pedestrian, zero fatality, one hit and run, one injury, six property. Thirteen prisoner prisoner transports, fifteen, excuse me, thirteen prisoner transports, fifteen court transports, one medical, one juvenile, one assist, and three mental health. There's a hundred and sixty-one civil paper attempts, forty-four of those are subpoenas, one hundred and twenty were civil papers, and ten were criminal papers, we had eighty-two total arrests for the month of March, and fifty-six of those were warrants served. We had the Easter egg hunts last weekend in Bellfield and Dickinson, that's probably the best, most organized Easter egg hunt we had in Dickinson with a, what I would say was the perfect amount of people showed up, thank you for Commissioner Frantrek and Commissioner White for showing up and helping us with that, it was very appreciated. Bellfield, that was the most people we had show up for Bellfield, so that was just the right amount of chaos, I'd say. We're still working on the Gladstone contract, haven't completed that yet, I was at that meeting again last night, still working on that. There was a Bellfield case that got, a theft case that got some attention on Facebook, we have a suspect in that case, and recovered some of the items there, and some church burglaries out there in Bellfield. I did want us to make sure we got the building update, talked about today, Paul, if you can kind of bring the guys up to speed.
Sure. We just, I guess, we have a, it's been known that we're working on a contract, or we've we've got a contract signed with Central Mechanical out of Bismarck, or Mandan, to redo some of our plumbing in the second level of the LEC building. We had an onsite with those folks last week, and I think we've decided is, since there is actually an audit, pre-a audit at the at the jail, that construction probably will not start until probably post middle of April somewhere. So, but, I don't know, they look, they seem to be fairly optimistic, I mean, it's kind of a Pandora's box we're opening up there, but overall, I think they're they're well-prepared, and and it'll go fine, there was some consideration. Given in the sheriff's department, we're very concerned about how that's going to maybe affect their operation, and it may be just a touch uncomfortable, but Jeff actually, from Central, actually seemed to be fairly optimistic at that meeting, as far as what kind of interruption it was going to give, so there's probably a good chance that we won't have to relocate the sheriff's department temporarily, like we maybe initially thought. And and I know the sheriff's department themselves are concerned about the relocation, because there's a few things over there that just can't relocate so easily, so I'd say overall, I mean, we're off, we're not necessarily started, but we're going in the right direction, so I'm sure, be happy when it's over, for sure.
And certainly, we may be asking that some latitude in what we do with some employees during that time, obviously, that relocation cost would be quite expensive, so if we have to do some things with some people for a day or two, or when they're working on some areas, that's just what we're going to have to do. One more thing, do we want to address the speed limit thing now, or do we want to wait?
It's up to you, it's at the end of the agenda, it's up to the chairman.
You can go ahead with it, I'll, I guess, if you want to talk about now.
Okay.
Yeah, so we had, at the last meeting, we adopted changing a portion of Highway ten east of town to a forty-five mile an hour speed limit, and I don't know who said it earlier, but the phones are definitely ringing in regard to that change. And so I'd like to reopen that discussion, I've talked a little bit to Al about it, I've talked to the sheriff about it, and if you haven't been out there, what what we did was go a little bit to the east of Ridgeview Estates with the forty-five mile an hour speed limit, and took that all the way into the current forty-five, which is just east of the I ninety-four intersection. So my thought was to make the sign that is currently the forty-five east of Ridgeview, make that the notice sign that we're going to have a reduced speed limit, and at at the one oh seven corner there, or close to that, closer to that corner, do a reduction. I've had a lot of comments, well, reduce it to fifty, I don't know that I have a lot of heartburn, excuse me, either way, forty-five to fifty, but I think we we take that first reduction a little too far, so open for discussion and recommendations in that regard.
So the speed limit on the west side of the bridge, I'm sorry, west side of the bridge is already forty-five, coming across the bridge is still forty-five, gone past.
West Plains?
West Plains, and that is still forty-five, correct? And then it picks up at forty-five.
It's now forty-five.
I mean, at fifty-five.
Forty-five.
It's now forty-five all the way east of one oh seven.
Correct, that's the discussion we had last time, but there, it was still forty-five east, east of the bridge still, it would, they didn't change it, it was always forty-five before there. That that sign's always been there, so you guys just put the flags up to address the warning I had, somebody put some flags up, I noticed. But that was always forty-five, I think the the thing is, is a lot of people, after they get across that bridge, they're they're at fifty-five already, and it's already, it's still forty-five mile an hour. We 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 know there were some plans on one oh seventh that that is a bypass, so as you discussed, they'll be turning lanes there at some point, you have the John Deere dealership going in there, I think we just need to reiterate that forty-five mile an hour sign somehow, and that was originally forty-five, it still is forty-five.
Yeah, I I'm trying to think, I go by there every day, where where did it convert to fifty-five previous to this, our action last month?
It was right, if I remember correctly, it was right somewhere around where the church is. Is that Chad, do you remember, or just Chad? Okay.
Which is appropriate.
Do you remember, Myron? Yeah, I think that's about where it was.
Yep. But it has been, then, for a while, maybe you cross the bridge, it's fifty-five, and nobody's ever monitored it, even though it was forty-five in a certain period of ti- area there, but more and more trucks pulling, you know, eighty thousand, ninety thousand pound trucks pulling in and out of there.
That's why we extended it.
Yeah, and just slower takeoffs, a lot more traffic in that area.
But if we're going to do that, then we should put some turning lanes in there, because that is, if you go east, no matter what the, if you're going east, if no matter what the speed limit is, if the trucks are, in fact, going on north one oh seven, and if we ever get that project completed, there'll be more trucks going on that, there's going to be more more likely to push the issue because of those trucks, so I think we need to accommodate that, if we're going to keep the speed limit low, we need to also accommodate the safety factor of that, and get turn turn lanes in.
And because you're going to have, you're going to have trucks turning, and people think they can pass them, and and so, I mean, I mean, turning lanes, there will be have to be something, if we get this.
I think at minimum, we need to move whatever the reduction is further west to right at one oh seven, or or just really close to one oh seven.
And then at some point, you know, if that one.
I don't know what you think, Al.
That one oh seventh, they will have a truck slowing down in that area and pulling out of that, so the westbound traffic coming that direction could have a little bit of a slowdown before it hits that one oh seventh going west.
You know, a lot of these places, they have the notice sign, right, I mean, I'm trying to think, even on one oh seven, we have a notice, if you're coming from the north, it it notices that in, you know, relatively soon, there will be a reduction in speed, so that was my thought, is let's 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 promote the safety, let's notice it, but move the the forty-five a little further west, closer to to one oh seven. So I'm just saying, there's there's a lot of people who have given some blowback on.
Because that is going to be the major focal point, will be one oh seven.
So so when they hit, to get this correct, so when they pass one oh seven, you want them down to forty-five?
Right, I would say if they're going west, right prior, right at one oh seven, right, right before it, instead of, I don't know what the distance is, I'd have.
It's a ways, okay.
We put it at a quarter mile, right?
Yeah, I mean, it's it's less than a half mile from the corner one oh seven to that church.
Yeah.
Okay.
We'll get it changed.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, anything else?
Okay.
Thank you. Thank you for doing the Easter egg hunt for the young ones.
You're welcome.
And the older ones.
Okay, thanks to do the County Road Superintendent, Al Heiser.
Good morning, everyone, one thing we didn't have, and it just come to my attention yesterday, we're going to be starting that grading project on one oh seventh and one hundred and fourteenth. We have a temporary construction easement, we have to make payment to, so it's not on the agenda, so I just, it's, which is kind of amazing, I didn't really realize it, but in them three miles that we're we're fixing up there, there's twenty-six residents in them three miles, so, which was kind of shocking when we added them up, I know we went and got the easements and stuff, but so I just need to have, make that payment, because I, we got a pre-construction later this week, and I'm not sure exactly when the contractor is going to start, so we need to get them payments made, so I don't know if we need to do it now, or just have her do it and bring it to the next meeting for the bills, but I'd like to get it paid, because I believe they're going to start before the next commission meeting, and I had already somebody inquire yesterday about it, so.
We're looking for a motion.
Yeah, just to pay the temporary construction easements, and temporary constructions really work well for us, because nobody loses land, they still got their own land, it just gives us the easement to build a road and move on, so.
I would move that we approve the temporary construction easements and authorize the payment.
Second.
Motion is second, any other discussion? Call vote, then Commissioner Masser.
Aye.
Commissioner White.
Aye.
Commissioner Marsh.
Aye.
Commissioner Claris.
Aye.
Chair votes aye, motion carried.
And then one other item on here, you know, we just about finished up crack seal until let snow come along last weekend, kind of, so we're going to get that done. Hopefully, Myron has been kind of ramrod in that crew, too, to get that ceiling, hopefully, we can get done in a day, but if not, we'll have to finish it on Thursday. We got the trucks hauling some Scorius Altitator on some secondary roads, we're probably going to start blading some of our secondary roads tomorrow, our main roads are still pretty hard, and I think we got some moisture in different areas, and some of that material will ease it, so we're going to actually start blading roads tomorrow. And some of these harder roads, if we don't get any moisture this spring, we're probably going to have to, like we did last year, we're going to have to haul water on them and just artificially wet them down so we can get them bladed. One other item, we did RFP, we did some interviews here a couple of weeks ago, I think this, you have that, Karen, so we need the chairman to sign that, and and what it'll be is to, RFP was for Highlands to do the construction engineering of that box culvert out there by Butterfields, north of Richardson, so. And then when it gets, then they also need the resolution sent to the DOT as soon as we can, so it sounds like you're not going to start later on, but there's some paperwork that's got to get done before that. And Commissioner Messer brought up about one hundred and seventh out here, I've really been anxious all winter to get some kind of a decision, and I I don't think we're any closer, but I, what I understand, it possibly going to come out this week yet. I know I got to thank our legislators and whoever else helped kind of our cause to stress the importance of getting that bypass where it is, I mean, it's, it'll just pay dividends all along. So I guess what I'm asking today is, and I think Jeremy come up with a great idea, let's just say if we don't get any funding from the DOT, I believe that with our prairie dog funding, we've got that held aside, and what I would like to do is at least do half of that project. Jeremy's got an idea, and I'll let him let him bring it up when he gets up here for the rest of it, so I think if we get nothing, we should at least do half of it.
Just a quick follow-up, several of us attended the County Commission Association Summit last week, and the DOT come forth, he told us March thirty-first that these, that flex funding would be decided, so I was actually hoping it wasn't an April fool's message yesterday, that we would hear positively something.
Well, I I did talk to another guy in local government last, I think it was Friday, apparently, there was some political stuff that was going on there, so I don't know what that all meant, so I'm I'm just, I'm really hopeful that, because indication from Director of Highways, Ron Hinky, is that that's the kind of project they're looking for, so I'm I'm hopefully, I think we got, I think we got that right project, I'm just hoping we'll get it, but so anyway. Let's say we don't get get any of that funding, I would like this board to give us the permission to at least do half of it, and and I'll let Jeremy, he come up with that, he had a great idea last week, he sat down and talked about how we could maybe bid the whole thing, but I'll let him carry that, so I guess if we get nothing, I would like to have the authorization to go ahead and bid at least half of it, because I don't really want to wait any longer, because what's been happening is if we'd had the funding available in December, this project would have cost a lot less. Mr. Claris knows the oil has been creeping, as oil creeps, are costs of that project, because it's asphalt, and that's that's moving up, too, so I guess what I'm trying to get at is if 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 we don't get that, we should know this week, hopefully, and if we don't, I'd like Jeremy to to advertise and get a bid before it gets too far down the line, and when, I don't know what, I don't know what oil prices are going to do, but usually, they kind of go up in the summer.
So what half are you talking about, the north half or the south?
The one oh seven.
What half of it, though, would you?
But we got, we start on intersection thirty-fifth and go to thirty-second, so that would be complete, and then down the road someday, we'd do the other stretch.
So maybe it's a question for Jeremy, but let's say you get an insignificant amount of money on the flex funding, do, if if we get flex funding, are we committed for the entire project in one section, or could we use flex funding to do it in segments as well?
I don't know that, but I'm sure whatever we get either be enough or not, but I guess if we, I mean, if we get part of it, I think we'll do the whole thing with the funds that we have set aside.
Yeah, I mean, you do have money in.
Yeah, because, you know, we got almost four million from the prairie dog, and we've we've kind of got that set aside, anticipating that, hey, you know.
Yep.
So, but I I guess I'd like to get permission to do half of it if we don't, because I don't want to wait till the next meeting, that's thirty days out, and other projects are being let, and.
And the original estimate cost for the entire project.
Let's let Jeremy do that.
I had a, I had a question about that, so if if you start the project, though, and you haven't found out if you're receiving that funding yet, will that affect?
We're not going to start the project till we know.
Till you know, okay.
And you will have an approval or denial before the next?
Exactly, I'm I'm hoping this week yet, I've been promised, and and Mr. Messer brought up, too, that the last meeting there at thirty-first, but it's, but anyway, what I understand, it went up to finance, I think when it goes to finance, that's the last step before it comes out. Other than that, I don't really have anything else, and we'll let our engineers give their reports, and Jeremy can, but I would probably need that motion to do that, so.
We also need a motion, this procurement of construction engineering services certificate for Project BRO zero zero forty-five zero seventy-six, P C N twenty-three seven twenty-five, that he talked about, that they awarded, was awarded to Highland Engineering.
I'll make that motion.
I need a signature to sign that.
I'm not going to repeat it.
I'll second if it's in front of us, so.
Okay. Motion is second, all in favor, state aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, motion carried. Do you have anybody here from Interstate Engineering?
Do we need to make a motion on that, what Al needed?
We're going to do that when Jeremy comes up.
Jeremy's up there, all right.
If you know one here from engineering, then we'll skip that, Highlands Engineering, then.
Morning Commissioners, Andrew Schrank with Highlands Engineering, I don't have any update for you on existing projects, I would just like to say thank you for the recommendation on the construction engineering for that box culvert near Richardson, and talking with Bronco, it sounds like they're planning to start on that one mid to late August, with a completion of early October, so we'll start working on the DOT on our contract for that, and provide updates as we have them, so, thank you.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thanks. Okay, now we do Northern Plains.
Good morning.
Good morning.
I got generally some pretty brief updates. Construction projects, we had a pre-job meeting last, I believe it was last Thursday, with Schwartz Construction for one hundred thirty-first Avenue over by Bellfield. They're looking at starting sometime in mid-April as weather allows, so we're kind of coordinating getting some of the staking done and fences moved, so next couple of weeks that one should be underway. Design projects, forty-first, one hundred ninth, and one hundred fourteenth, we got another pre-construction meeting set up for Thursday of this week with Liebichuk Construction. Initial conversations with Hugh is sometime later this month, they'll probably get started, so it'll be good to get a couple of projects started later this month. As far as one hundred seventh and thirty-second, I guess one of the ideas I sort of just discussed with Al, I think we all thought we were going to know where the flex funding status was, but one of the ideas I just kind of kicked around with Al is if the commission or the county only gets a portion of that funding, whether that's twenty-five percent, half, seventy-five percent, whatever, it probably won't be all of it, is just my hunch. Maybe you can bid an alternate of a three-mile project or a six-mile project and award whatever's best to the commission, get your best bang for your bucks. So if you only have half the funding, you'll essentially save a little bit on demolization and some other things, so that was one of the ideas, but I think it might be a little too early to, to lay out those alternates at this point. We don't know if it's half the funding, three-fourths, zero, whatever. You could even have different completion dates of this year or potentially next year for the six-mile project, so I don't know how much we want to kick that around now, but I would kind of like to know what that level of funding would be, in my opinion. Unless you guys have any, any other ideas.
What's the total project, the full six miles?
I think we were at about seven and a half million.
Well, I, I do, I agree, I don't know how we legitimately do it, whether we do that today or do it in a special meeting if the flex funding comes out, but I think we have to give you authorization to go bid it if it's in segments or alternates. I, I think that's a good idea. But like I said, I, I would stand, I know we've got several million in the pot for this project, knowing what we know, and it doesn't, we need to get this done, I guess. And we've got, what, Prairie Dog was two-point-six million?
No, the Prairie Dog was just about, little short of four million, and then plus we got another, Karen, you have to refresh me another eight-hundred thousand from something, so we'd have enough on hand to do at least half, and hopefully if we get some funding from the DOT, maybe we can do it all, I just, until we get that. I just see if Jeremy's got the authorization, once we find out, is to do what we need to do to kick it off.
For your alternate bids, I mean, would you have one bid for the whole thing, one bid for half?
Yeah, it, it.
I mean, does that add a lot more to the cost of the bidding? It shouldn't really take, I mean, just numbers on papers.
The bid proposal will be about the same, there's not a whole lot of added cost with that. One of the things we would have to know is what would be that first phase? Would it be three miles? It would be all of one oh seventh probably? And then what would happen, you know, in the meantime if, if you were awarded three-fourths of the funding? Well, then you would pretty much do all of it at that point, but it's kind of hard to put a set of plans and bid something without knowing an approximate ending point.
Yeah. So basically that'd be three separate bids, but it'd be all in one bid, right?
Yeah, I mean, there's all kinds of variations it could be, but the bid schedule could get fairly complicated without knowing the funding level. I guess I'm kind of hung up on how we could present that to potential bidders, not knowing what the commission may want to award unless, let me, let's just assume it's, it's zero dollars of flex funding. Is the commission okay with spending seven and a half million dollars to pave that? If the answer is yes, well then it's really easy to put, to go to bid on that.
So through the process of application to the DOT on this, have you gotten any indication whether, you know, as far as criteria, does it meet what they're looking for?
I, I think it would score really high.
Okay.
And I think Alice had some conversations with other people too, it fits a lot of the criteria. I think it would score really, really high compared to some of the other projects that I've heard, that other counties or cities has applied for, I mean, this is, it's all their criteria.
So could we do your recommendation, bid it? Because you're going to need a timeframe to put that out and bid it in the three segments, the east, west, the north, south, and the entire project. And then, you know, I don't know how much lead time typically you have on the bid, we would certainly hope that by the time that comes, we've got a firm number, then we could react to that, or is that not where you want to go?
No, I, I think it's right, I think if it's zero, we do half, but I think we should still put the alternate, this three miles, because I think what'll happen is, is if we do the three mile and alternate the other three mile, the bidder might say, hey, you know what, we might get a better price, and it's possible, and then, and I think we let this week go by and see what happens this week, and then maybe next week we decide, hey, we should know by then.
Yeah.
Then we can make a decision, but Jeremy needs to know, because I don't want to wait till the next meeting, so I think regardless, either we do it all, we do half or something, you just need to, your blessing to do that.
Will there be another round of flex funding next year?
I believe so.
Okay. Depends on the property tax measure, but the, yeah, and, and there's a bunch of political subs, how many applications were there, they said?
There, there was a lot, but the thing that I find the most odd or unusual is the new library in Midora actually got two or two-point-nine of flex funding, so they're the only entity I know, and I don't even think billing counted, I think somebody from the foundation put in that grant, and they already received it.
Yeah.
So I don't know how that all happened, but anyway.
And we, and we put in seven-point-five for six miles, is that what we did?
I believe so.
Yes.
And it scored well, and the most unique thing about this project, they're looking for shovel-ready. If talked about shovel-ready, all Jeremy's got to do is advertise that it's ready, so there's nothing more for us to do in that project.
So if we make a motion to approve the, the three miles, you're supposed to present, have a, an answer by the end of this week if, if it's approved or not, and, and if it is approved.
We'll do the whole project. I think we need latitude to kind of, and we can let, you know, I got you two commissioners and I hold my portfolio, when we find something out, we can contact you and say, this is what we got, what do you suggest?
Yeah. Well, I make a motion, then you go ahead and do the three, the alternate type bids.
Okay. I would second that.
That way you can start moving on forward and, you know, we're not tied up for another month.
Yeah, so just how this, the bid opening would go with the publishing requirements as laid out in the central code, takes about three weeks to publish, and then you need about a week to get the ad to the paper, so I think we can probably make the May bid opening. In the event that we can't, would it be acceptable to potentially have a special bid opening a few days after, you know, maybe the Thursday after, if that's what it comes to?
That'd be fine.
Absolutely.
Because that would kind of accelerate the schedule a little bit rather than wait for the, the whole next meeting.
Nope, I think it's.
Okay, well, I think I got my margin orders then, so.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
We didn't vote on it, did we?
No.
Oh. We have a motion. We have a motion.
Okay. All in favor, state aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, motion carried. Next to do KLJ Engineering.
Good morning, Andrew Krebs with KLJ. Just to give you a brief update, so on a roundabout project, we're currently working on the preliminary grading design, designing the temp bypass, so we've been receiving responses from SOV letters, and then been replying to any questions they've had. We submitted our well and report to the Corps, and they concurred with our no findings determination, and then we also sent in the culture report to the DOT as well, and they end up coordinating with SHIPPLE. I'm on our chip seal project, Morris Seal Coat and Trucking, they're the little bidders, so they're planning to start maybe middle of July or August on that project. And then for that project, I guess I put together a scope of services for construction, includes our full-time construction observation for the project, and the project consists of chip sealing, fog sealing, pavement markings, and also include the testing in the scope. So this project, it is federal aid, so we'll be following the DOT procedures and then have to use their CAR system. Our total estimated cost was eighty-seven thousand nine hundred, and they previously sent this to Al for review. He didn't have any questions, but he recommended I bring it to the commission for approval, so I did send that to Karen, and I did print out a copy, and I don't know if you guys got any questions on it.
It's in our pack, yeah.
Any questions on it? If not, I'll look for a motion to approve the scope of services, construction engineering.
I'll make that motion.
A motion, I have a second.
Second.
I have a second. All in favor, state aye.
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 Those opposed, motion carried. That's it. Okay.
Thanks.
Thank you.
We did have that last project on the list, so that was for that box culvert project you just awarded to Highlands, so Al had reached out and wanted to know if we could complete an inspection of that first section of the box, that's something the DOT is requiring now to make sure that they maintain federal aid eligibility, so we had an office down there, so we just sent, sent a guy over there to take care of that for you.
Appreciate that.
Okay.
Thank you.
Good, thanks.
Thank you.
So I don't know, I did print out one if you wanted to sign it.
Okay.
I can take the one that needs to be signed, because Dean can sign it.
Okay. Yeah.
Thank you.
Excellent, Kurt Frelick, County Extension Agent.
Good morning, Commissioner Kurt Frelick, NDSU Extension Agent, here to request out-of-state travel to go to Oklahoma to take some youth to the National Land Judging Contest. We leave April twenty-eighth, will return the following Saturday, depending on travel coming home. The youth every, have raised all the dollars to pay for the trip, so no, no expense to the county, it's just formality of requesting out-of-state travel.
Just want to make a motion to approve Kurt's out-of-state travel.
I have a motion, I have a second.
Second.
I have a second. Any other discussion? All in favor, state aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, motion carried.
Thank you. One other quick item, last time I was in front of you in February, the FCW agent position, I said we had no applicants. We do have applicants, we did have interviews, we do have an individual that accepted the position with a start date of July one, so.
Yep. Excellent. Sounds good.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Kurt.
Five minutes for the debate. I'm going with the DSU meetings discussion. Discussion that, I guess we prove the minutes on from that, right? Is there any other thing? Or is the state's attorney, what do you, anything else do you add to that, or?
I just thought it would be okay for you guys to also just talk a little bit about your, your meetings with DSU, so that we've got them both in your minute form, and then you've also spoken about them at a meeting for transparency, just make sure everyone kind of knows what was going on. I don't know how, how many people get to our website and see the minutes, but I know more people probably watch the meetings, so just to be on the up and up.
Okay, I guess I can go first, I've met with Mr. Orton, I got on that, and then we just discussed mainly, was a bit, mainly concerned was about that they weren't trying to take away the donor they had at that time for the four-H, they weren't, you know, trying to pursue that in any way, and then it was presented to me what their two options were that they were looking at for the new project on that. And at the time, I didn't know I had another commissioner I met with, and so I thought it was only the second one, so I did. Realized that was going, and then notified the state's attorney at that time.
Well, I met with Ty. Neil had visited with me, said Ty was going to give me a call, Ty, we have gaming for the foundation down the Esquire also, so I mean, we meet quite regularly. We visited about the plans that were there, basically, I laid out some of my concerns, we visited a little bit more, I met with Chip on my own, I called him up and said I'd like to visit and have a better visual about, because I just thought it was my, if I'm going to be making any decisions on anything in the future, I need to have a better, broader vision in my mind of what's going on. And I think both visits were about an hour long, that's really not, nothing, nothing really that tie, and I visited about that, was not already presented at the city commission meeting, so.
Yeah, and I'll jump in, so I originated most of these, was the original participant in most of these conversations, been active with the university, so conversations of what's going on at the university are not uncommon, and I think anytime we have, you know, some exciting news for the university, that's good for our community, our county, our area. So the meetings basically were typically just getting up to speed of where they were after receiving some funds from the legislature to upgrade the egg classrooms in the indoor arena, the minutes reflect that, that, that I submitted, and I, I guess I don't have really anything to add, we had three or four conversations, everyone was basically just trying to get additional information. You know, contrary to popular belief, there was never an ask, there was, there was never a understanding of how it would move forward, it would be, it was just informational purposes only, so.
Yeah, that's basically, it was just informational, there was no discussion on any type of donations, anything like that. You know, my concerns was, as Dean's was, about our donor that we already had and losing that donor, and basically came out that they're two separate buildings with two separate purposes.
Okay. Anything else, then I guess we're. There's no other outside, we'll move on then to the.
Do we need to make a motion to make those part of the minutes, or?
It doesn't hurt, yeah.
I would, I would move that the minutes or the notes submitted from Commissioners Marsh, Franchuk, and myself be added to the minutes of our commission.
A motion, I have a second.
I have a second.
I have a second. All in favor, state aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, motion carried. Next, we're looking at, close enough that we do it ahead of the tax abatements again.
I don't have much of a voice, so good luck, guys, but Chairman, members of the board, I'm Natalie Wandler, I'm here to discuss the two abatements that we have. We'll start out with the twenty-six forty twenty zero forty thirty zero zero zero. This is Annalee Smith, and basically what happened to her property is in twenty-twenty-two, at the end of twenty-twenty-two, they, we had a snowstorm, her pipes broke, nobody could live in the house, it's got mold in it, Lana has some pictures, you can see the mold, so it's basically not livable. She paid her twenty-three taxes and then came and talked to me, and I told her, you know, you can file for an abatement. We put the value. We put the value that she's requesting, basically, we left the garage value and the lot, land value on it. I don't know if you guys have a copy of that, but I mean, her, I think she said her grandson works for a construction company that deals with mold and he would like to eventually remodel it. So I put the value down for twenty-twenty-four already to basically just the garage. She's just asking basically for an abatement for twenty-three, since it wasn't livable at all in twenty-three.
Just for the fiscal year of twenty-three?
Correct. I've corrected it for twenty-four. And then her, if her grandson decides to do something with it, he will have to take out a building permit. So then we will add it back onto the tax roll when he completes it.
Is there any utilities on in that facility?
No. No, they had, while they, once they found out the pipes broke, the first thing she did was call and make sure the electricity and the water and everything got shut off. So it's just been sitting vacant for a year. So I just don't see, I mean, I'm the one that suggested she file an abatement to get a refund because it's just sitting there empty.
Okay.
I see. When was the date of this storm?
It was in November of twenty-two.
Got it, okay.
So it actually sat completely empty all of twenty-three.
I mean, you have provisions that if a property is uh, uh, I don't want to use the word decommission, but if, if there was a fire at the property, you would do the same thing.
Correct.
Right.
If she would have called me when it happened, I would have just automatically for the twenty-three value, taken that value off.
Right.
And it would have been part of the, you know, the equalization meeting that that value was lowered. But because she didn't think about it till her property tax came out and she had to write a two thousand dollar plus check for something that's just sitting there.
So the thirty-four six, that's the garage?
That's the garage and the land, yep.
So, Mr. Chairman, I would move that we accept the recommendation of the uh tax assessor and abate the twenty-twenty-three taxes as recommended.
I have a motion, I have a second.
Second.
I have a second. Any other discussion? Not the roll call vote, Commissioner Masser.
Aye.
Commissioner Clers.
Aye.
Commissioner Marsh.
Aye.
Commissioner White.
Aye.
Chair votes aye, motion carried.
Okay, and then on to the second one, which is forty-two zero zero twelve zero twenty-four fourteen zero 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 is Transportation Logistics, which is the old Halliburton plant in Richerton. Um, Bill Platson is here, so I can let you, let him talk. Um, I will tell you, the city board did approve it already, so it's just coming to you guys for final approval on it. Um, but Bill can talk better than I can, so I'll let him get up and talk.
Well, can you state your name for the record then?
Bill Platson, owner of Transportation Logistics. We purchased prop, uh, property and I believe it was in late uh twenty-twenty-one, I believe so. Anyway, prior to purchasing the property, I went to the county and said, you know, there's no way we can take on this project with the current tax liabilities that are there. You know, was not to be used for the intent that it was built. Uh, as a matter of fact, we had to add track in order to, to um accommodate a new type of business out there. And of course, um, that tax was reduced by almost uh two-thirds. It was brought from a basis of a hundred and forty-three thousand dollars a year down to approximately forty-five thousand dollars a year, which was something that we felt we can handle for the type of business that we were going to be doing on the property. We invested a fair amount of money into the project in order to make it work, you know, to try to bring jobs into, into the Richerton area. And um, of course, uh, right after we purchased the property and got annexed into the city, I believe there was a commercial appraiser that came to the cit, to the city and appraised the property. It was never talked to me and about how we uh did the project. Uh, we used all used parts, we used all of our own labor. Um, it was, it was quite an undertaking to, to get the project off the ground. Uh, we're using it as a storage yard. On occasion, we have used and been able to put sand through, but it's very cyclical. And um basically, uh, you know, what we're saying is that it uh, um, from twenty-twenty-two to twenty-three, the taxes were risen by two and a half times. Uh, went from basically a hundred and twenty-three dollars a day up to three hundred and twenty dollars a day in tax basis. And it's just, it's untouchable for the amount of work that we put through that facility. So that was the reason that we applied for the abatement and uh we appreciate Stark County to take a look at that for us and uh accept what the city of Richerton has decided.
So prior to the increase, what was the assessed value? Uh, I'd, I've opened the wrong packet, so I don't have it in my, it's like the assessed value prior.
So when Halliburton had it, it was at?
No, when, when Bill bought it, you reduced it, you reduced it to?
We reduced it down to like four point five. And part of that was, I mean, even prior to, like, we didn't have a sale or anything to reduce it until he came and talked to me. And it had been sitting empty for two years at that point, so we did reduce it. Um, I did talk to Bill and, you know, I did tell him, you know, once this gets going, things might change. Well, it wa, the plant itself was already annexed into the city. It was just the extra part that he bought for the track that actually they annexed at that point. But then the city council went and, and hired Dustin Bach in our industrial appraiser to do it. So the city paid for him to come in and do the appraisal. So it was kind of out of my hands at that point. Um, but I have went through and looked at the land part of it, because I do the land, Dustin does the actual structures. Um, after Bill and I talked, he actually lets a farmer farm it. So I went through and measured with our GIS, how many acres are actually farmable or hayable either way and reduce that to farmland value. So we did get a little bit of a reduction in the land, about four hundred thousand dollars. And then the city basically went with Bill's request, which was kind of halfway in between what it was and what we had put on it for twenty-three.
Uh, so the question I have, so that facility was a transloading facility for Halliburton, correct? For sand, frac sand?
Yes, sir.
So you were not storing any sand, transloading any sand out of that facility or?
We, we have, we have gotten some small contracts to handle sand and it's like anything, they come and they go. As a matter of fact, uh, our can, our sand contract just got canceled again.
So?
So we were in business of, of bringing sand through the facility for about three months and as of the seventeenth of this month, it quits again.
And nobody's paying to merge on any rail cars out on them spurs?
Well, no, because it's private.
Okay. So even if I stored sand out there, I wouldn't pay any to merge on them, on them rail cars?
No.
Okay.
No, if it's, if it, if it's a private car, you never would.
Okay.
Yeah. Other questions?
Yeah, so uh I have visited with school board over there, because they're a player in this. I've visited with the city, they're a player in it. The, I, I think the big point is even at the agreed to assessed value with the city, you're still significantly higher than where you were, uh, right? So, and I, and I guess the school's the biggest player there. They're the ones who are gonna financially be affected the most and talk to the school board president. And, and they were, they found it acceptable because they're, they're technically not being penalized because the assessed value that you've agreed to is higher than it was in twenty-twenty-two, so.
Any other questions? If not, I'll look for a motion on this matter then.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, I'll make a mo, uh, a motion to accept the recommendation of the Dick, Richerton's uh city to adjust the twenty-twenty-three um assessed value to six point four million, is that what it is?
Yes.
Okay.
I'll second that.
A second. Any other discussion? Not roll call vote, then Commissioner Masser.
Aye.
Commissioner Marsh.
Aye.
Commissioner White.
Aye.
Commissioner McClers.
Aye.
Chair votes aye, motion carried. Thank you.
Thanks, Bill.
Thank you, guys.
Do you want to take a break or do you, you should move on? Okay, we'll take a break until twenty after then.
Next on the agenda is the DSU indoor rodeo arena presentation.
Thank you, Chairman and Commissioners. My name is Steve Easton. I am the President of Dickinson State. With me today is Ty Orton, who is the Executive Director of the Dickinson State University Heritage Foundation. This is our request that the county support the DSU Ag Building Arena project. And our request is for $2 million. This is the meeting where we are making that request. We have a few slides. The first one is, I'll go through it relatively, actually one more. It talks about DSU's overall economic impact. That is based upon a study that a couple of economics professors from NDSU do system-wide, statewide, so those aren't DSU figures. I think the, do we have a handout? Okay, in the materials that you have, it has the one sheet of that information. It is a, we believe that Dickinson State is an important partner in our county, in our region, and in our city, and we have a significant impact in the community that we love. And we appreciate support. The County Commission has supported DSU and the area. You might recall the Sanford Sports Complex approximately two years ago, that there was support from the County Commission for that multi-agency project. We very much appreciate that. We believe that has been a success story in our community and will continue to be. We are, so the basics, the basics of Dickinson State's project are the following. The legislature in the last session appropriated 17.1 million, and the math for that is that they appropriated $18 million with the understanding that we would have to raise $900,000. So it's a net appropriation from the legislature of 17.1 million dollars with the understanding that it's an $18 million project. So we unlock those funds once we raise or use local funds, that would be DSU funds, for that, for the $900,000. We are confident that we will unlock that funding. We believe that the project we're about to present to you will present significant opportunities for our community. It is a Dickinson State project, so it is on Dickinson State's campus. Again, my analogy would be to the Sanford Sports Complex and to the Biju Activities Center, which are Dickinson State facilities but are facilities used by many, many different agencies and entities within our city. We believe that that facility, particularly the arena portion of the project, will allow us to host both spectator events and other things that I wasn't aware of about three or four years ago when I first started down, actually, it's almost exactly two years ago when we first started on this project because the idea for it came from my strategic planning session with the Governor and Lieutenant Governor two years ago. They had recently been in our Ag Building and our arena and suggested that we needed to make improvements. I can't remember the exact language, but as the President of Dickinson State, I noticed that our governor is not particularly fond of bricks and mortar projects on state university campuses. And so I thought, well, that's interesting, important to notice that. And the meeting that I have with the governor for the next session of the legislature is two days from now, on Thursday. So I think it's about two years ago that we first started down this project. If we go to the next slide, this is a general overall view of both what we have and what we hope to have. If you look at this slide, the lightest blue that's almost white is the existing arena on our campus and the existing Ag Building. These projects were constructed in about 1981. Actually, the arena came shortly before the Ag Building itself, if my recollection is correct. And I think it was 80, 81-ish, in that area, in that era, 80 or 81, that this original project came. So that dotted line around existing arena forms the rectangle that is our current, our current, what we refer to as our indoor arena. We've had substantial limitations in that space. It is, we do occasionally bring in very limited seating for events, but it's just not large enough to have spectators and a full rodeo. It is, it has been a good facility for us to have. We're grateful to have had that facility. We use it primarily for rodeo practice. It has some limitations because it's a bit imperfect for the horses. They get used to stopping earlier than they should, and then when we get to our first few rodeos in the spring, that causes problems. We also host our Kids' Day on the Farm in that facility. That's a, that's a project of DSU's Agriculture Club. That's a student project. Of course, the students get a lot of help from Dr. Poland and other members of our faculty, but that's actually, other than football games, that's the, that's the single event that brings more people to Dickinson State than any other, is our Kids' Day on the Farm, which is in April. We also use that facility a bit for educational purposes. Every once in a while, we'll have an animal in the facility for a short period of time related to our classes. So if you look at the, if you look at the slightly darker shade of blue, it says Arena Expansion. That rectangle is roughly speaking, we'll put more detail on this in a couple of slides, that's roughly speaking what the project would look like at $18 million. And then if we are able to build the project we hope to build at $25 million, then you add that additional rectangle, the darkest blue. If we go to the next slide, we'll go, oh, I'm sorry, before we do that, you should also note that on the south of the building, you can see some additional dark blue, which is the deck, the viewing area that would be part of the $25 million project, that wouldn't be part of the $18 million project. So now if we go to the next slide, this is the exterior of the building at 20. And by the way, I should note that we're in the process of this project where we've, you know, we've got architects, you know, we bid out an architect's contract. We now have a construction manager at risk that was also bid out. So it's JLG Architects, and the construction manager at risk is JE Dunn. So as you, as I'm sure everyone on the commission is aware, I'm pretty new at this, but as you do these building projects, the costs get more and more into focus as you get further and further down the line. So we feel, we haven't bid this project out yet, so we do not know exactly what the cost will be, but we feel like the 25 to 25 and a half million dollar figure is a, is a a pretty solid figure based on analysis by JE Dunn and by the architects. So this is the view at 20, the exterior view at $25 million. You'll notice a two-story entryway there in the dark blue. You'll also notice gray siding that would not be painted over gray. That would be new siding at $25 million. If you look at the lower picture, you'll notice something that'll become a bit more obvious in a moment, and that is, this, at this price point, we believe we will be able to enclose the entirety of this facility. So you would not have what we'll see in a couple of slides, which is exterior pens for livestock. Let's go to the next slide. It shows a little bit about, a little bit of detail. And then at the end, we've got a slide that has X's over things that we wouldn't be able to, that we do not believe we'll be able to get at $18 million. So you'll notice the competition space, 135 by 230, which is sufficient size for rodeo hosting, not generous size, sufficient size, so that we could host rodeo with roping events, barrel racing, as well as rough stock. Rough stock actually uses less space than those other, than those other types of events. At this price point, you'll notice in the upper left-hand corner, that deck, we'll have some additional slides that show that, and that's two stories over there. In the lower left, you'll notice that the livestock pens are enclosed because the wall is on the, and the exterior of those pens that are to the, that are to the eastern portion of the building. And then you'll note that second rectangle in the lower right, that's a warm-up arena. Now, when we say arena, that is not spectator-type arena. I mean, that is essentially a warm-up area. The rodeo people have told us that that's very important if you want to host rodeos in the winter, particularly for quarter horses that are barrel racing, that it's a lot to ask those quarter horses to go from outside immediately into a competition space. And then there's also some locker rooms and some livestock stalls in that second rectangle, and then seating for 800. That's, that's our dream. We don't think it's an extravagant project, but it is. It is a pretty, a pretty nice facility. We believe that facility would allow us to attract, as a community, some very substantial events. But I want to note that the capacity, the spectator capacity at the $25 million level is about 800 in the bleacher seats, and then about another 120 in the upper deck. So it's just a little short of 1,000 for capacity in that area. There are some things that limit our capacity. The main one is that in order to save costs, we are planning to use what I call the ribs of the existing structure. I'm sure that's not the correct technical term, but the steel, the heavy steel that's in the building that's holding up the roof and the walls right now, we have designed this project to reuse those assets. That limits to a certain extent what you can do for spectators because you've got to get them inside of the, I guess that would be the west end of the building, and so you cannot just keep, if you're going to use those existing ribs, you can't just keep building higher and higher and higher for spectator seats. So that's, that's one of our, one of our limiting factors. But we believe that's a trade-off worth making in order to save significant costs by reusing and continuing to use those ribs on that facility. So the next slide will show, the first one on the upper left shows the viewing deck in the upper right portion of that picture, and that shows you a bit of what the arena would look like during a barrel racing event with your 800 spectators in the, in the lower right-hand corner of the upper left-hand picture. The upper right picture shows the deck area that we are proposing. You'll notice glass there as a separator between those in, I guess you'd call it a social area, and in front of the glass, you've got people right in the arena. That's a little bit like what we have in some of our, in some of our facilities at the BAC, where the very serious fans go in front of and maybe even expose themselves, in that case, to the outdoors and the cold, and the less, and some other people stay inside. That bottom picture shows the, that area, essentially from the door to that area. There's a concession area there on the left, if you see that hawk on the wall. If you go from the hawk's beak a little bit forward, that's a concession area, and we have some Hall of Fame space that we'd like to feature both, well, we'd like to feature DSU rodeo athletes, and also, if you're interested, we'd like to also think about Stark County rodeo athletes who have had, who have had notoriety or should be recognized in some fashion. So the next slide shows, and I do want to also mention that the $18 million from the state is not going entirely into the arena. Roughly half of that funding is going into the upgrading the existing bricks and mortar of the non-arena portion of the Ag Building, and other things that need to be done outside. We do have the advantage of not having to put a parking lot in for this facility because it would be the BAC's parking lot, but there are some things that need to be done outside. Primarily, we have a, we have a bit of a drainage problem, not a bit of a drainage problem. We have a drainage problem at the place where the sidewalk that you use to get into the Ag Building meets the BAC parking lot. That's a very low space, and that thing is a skating rink for, it's, it's not a huge, well, it is kind of a skating rink that you really can't avoid when you're going into the Ag Building. So there are things like that that need to be done. We've had a, I hope I used the correct term, pre-planning meeting with the city to talk about what we need in terms of fire egress for those facilities. So some work needs to be done there. Potentially some additional work on the parking lot at the softball field. So roughly speaking, where about half of these, half of the $18 million would be spent on the arena, the other half would be spent on the building and the exterior of the area. As with the BAC and with the Sanford Sports Complex, I'll start out by being, you know, I want to be frank, this is a Dickinson State facility. I'm the President of Dickinson State. We are very excited about what this will do for Dickinson State. But we are also excited about what we believe this can do for our community and for our area. Our primary hours of use of that facility, and I want to emphasize "primary" because there are occasional exceptions, but our primary use of that facility, both as an educational facility, because this will be, and now I am talking about the arena itself. The arena will allow us to, for short terms, bring animals in and do other things that will supplement our agriculture classes. When we need that building at Dickinson State is primarily from 8:00 or so in the morning until 5:00 or 6:00 at night, from Monday until five or six at night, from Monday through Thursday, perhaps occasionally Friday mornings for the school year. So from the middle of August to the middle of May. That would accommodate rodeo practices, some of which we still have, we are planning on keeping our outdoor practice area that you may remember from seeing when you're going down State Avenue. Our rodeo team is generally on the road, starting about Thursday. They don't get back until, until Sunday. And so we believe that this opens up the possibility for some very significant community use of that facility. Because there was discussion of, of our, of our previous, the minutes I saw, the summaries of the, of what was said earlier, I do want to say that one thing has, one thing I think has, has changed from our original two years ago thoughts about this, about this building. I believe if, I believe we probably will end up hosting our collegiate rodeo in this building. At first, I didn't believe that to be the case, but I think that's likely to happen. We are in a very northern-based region for our rodeo. Our rodeo region goes, it's North and South Dakota, Iowa, and Nebraska, I'm probably missing a state, Wisconsin. So we're in a very northern-based region. They're prob, and so they, we, we fight like we do this year, the weather. They're probably going to move our rodeo to late in the fall or early in the spring and ask us, ask us to host it inside. That is not what I originally thought. I thought we'd continue to have our rodeo outside. But I think that's probably likely to, likely to be the case. That's one weekend a year. We would have to schedule that rodeo, so it's not on the same weekend as a football game. That parking lot is, there are times at football games when it gets very, very used. We look forward to continued cooperation with the county and its facilities. We believe that this arena could be, could serve as a backup arena for even the regularly scheduled rodeos, both in our county and even in some other areas. We now live in an area, era where we kind of know when storms are coming. And we hope that this might be the kind of facility that in case, case a storm is coming, instead of canceling that night of the rodeo, you might be able to, in the summer, move that rodeo indoors. And then we also think that there will be a lot of, of use of the, of the facility for youth rodeos, for roping events. We do, we do plan to keep that arena floor as an equine and rodeo-based facility. So if we, maybe we can go to the next, the next slide, because I think, oh, I'm sorry, that's, that shows, that shows the work that we're doing on the Ag Building itself. And now if we go to the next slide. This is the one that shows what an $18 million project is likely to look, to look like. At $18 million, you take off the warm-up area on the end of the building, that second rectangle that I talked about. And if we go back, if we can go back just, just quickly, another, another big thing you lose is the enclosures of the livestock pens. So the building, the exterior of the building, the livestock pens would be outside the exterior of the building at $18 million. I'm sorry, now we can go forward. Thanks, thanks for doing that earlier. You lose that, you lose that warm-up area, you lose the, the deck, the seating becomes, seating for 600 instead of, instead of for 800. And in one that's particularly painful to me, you still have yellow siding on that building, because you have to, you have to reuse that siding at the 18, at the $18 million figure. So these are the kinds of things that, and I will say that at its, at its quarterly meeting last week, the Dickinson State University Heritage Foundation Board approved a $10 million fundraising project. So our goal is to raise 10 million additional dollars, and then to invest approximately seven to seven and a half million dollars of that in the building itself. And that's what we're asking for the county to consider supporting at $2 million. But we are hoping, our goal is to raise another two and a half million dollars to put away into, into endowed funds, to support the operation and maintenance, and potentially to support a staff member at Dickinson State who is the building manager, and perhaps an assistant rodeo coach, to run that facility. For the facility to be run well, it really needs a, maybe not quite a full-time person, but a, a person whose significant portion of their duties would be, would be devoted to maintaining the building and arranging rentals and other events. We believe that the BAC experience and the Sanford Sports Complex experience give us confidence that we can make this work as a community facility. In the Sanford Sports Complex, we have an MOU. Now, it was supported by both the county and the city. And again, we appreciate that support. Our MOU is between Parks and Rec, Dickinson Parks and Rec, Dickinson Public School District, and Dickinson State. And so in that MOU, it, I just refreshed my memory of it this morning, I read it while I was, while I was in the back. It says that Dickinson State is the scheduler for the championship softball field, what is known as Brevera Field. Dickinson Public Schools is the scheduler of the rest of that facility during the school year. Dickinson Parks and Rec is the scheduler of that facility during the summer months, during the, the non-school months. Dickinson Parks and Rec's contribution to that project is that they do the maintenance for that, for that facility. It's always easy to remember answers. Commissioner Masser earlier asked, asked about Parks and Rec, if they, the Sanford Sports Complex would be another example of, Parks and Rec does the maintenance for everything other than the championship softball field. And that's their contribution. They also are adding a playground area to that facility. And we would envision a similar, a similar MOU. We think that the county would have some, some claim to use of this project. And we'd need to work that out in an, in an MOU. I should say, if we can get the support. To be frank, if the county, and we understand it's your, you have to make the decision about how to spend the taxpayer funds. The other alternative is, is for the county to, I mean, if you decide not to support the request that I'm making today, Dickinson State is not gonna say the county never gets to use that facility. That's, that's not gonna happen. What it probably will mean is that we're gonna have to rent you the facility, instead of, instead of getting the support in advance. What that exact number will be, I can't tell you, and it will change over time. But with or without the county's support, we want this to be a facility that's a community and county and regional facility, that we hope we will have county events in this facility. It is not the facility that was discussed earlier at the County Park Board meeting and at the beginning of this, of this meeting. Again, we hope to be able to support events, but we think there'll be a lot of room for that. And I, I'll stand for your questions. Thanks for taking the time to listen to me.
Do you have any questions?
Yeah, I've got a couple. What's, first of all, what's the timing on your getting this project running? I mean, what's your ultimate goal at Breakground?
We're gonna have to make a decision on how big a box to buy very soon, whether we, and that's, that's gonna happen. And, and if we can make that decision in April, we believe we can get the, and Ty, correct me if I make any mistakes on this, because I'm going off of memory. We are hopeful that by the end of this, by the end of September, that's the target date for having that box up. We hope to be in the facility and using it sometime in the fall, probably the late fall of 2025. That's, and I want to be, that's, you know, construction project. That's the optimistic view. We think that's still possible, but we're gonna have to make some decisions pretty quickly.
Okay. So what would, one of the things that I think became clear, previous park board meetings, the public meeting on the 27th of February, is that the, if someone wants to come and do a roping event, if someone wants to come do a barrel event, or cutting, or just casual riding, in, in my opinion, those, those things would have to be worked out in advance, because you can't say, yeah, we'll do barrel racing and then give them one night a month, you know what I mean? So what's, what's the concept? What have the conversations been? I haven't had any of those, but what do you say to the, the group that wants to sponsor one of those events?
First of all, I would think that we're probably renting it to that group. And then, and then we need to coordinate those schedules. And I think you need to coordinate those schedules months in advance. I think that if the county would support this project, I think as we, as we would work out an MOU, I think we'd have to make it clear what the county's entitlement to the use of that facility is, based upon the contribution. And I think you work that out in an, in an MOU. So the county's entitled to whatever you work out. Again, I think there's a lot of potential use, there is a lot of potential time left for the county besides when DSU needs the facility. And then other groups, like a riding group, for example, I think they're in a lower priority position than the county would be, if the county supports the project financially. And that's, again, kind of why you need a building manager, right? I mean, you need somebody to run these schedules, and to run them, to run them in advance. And then if somebody wants to run a winter rodeo, a PBR event, or something like that, then there's gonna be a price for that, too, because there are significant expenses associated with these, with these facilities. And, and we'll have to develop a price schedule and, and how you get on the schedule from that standpoint also.
I have a couple of questions. You don't build a $25 million facility without, out adding curriculum, too. You're having classrooms, so that facility's gonna get used more and more over time, correct?
That's the hope, yes. I mean, we, and, and Commissioner White, we also, we also hope it will draw additional students, additional Ag students. So not only additional curriculum, but more students in our current Ag curriculum. That's right.
Previous years with MOUs, I got some feedback from a couple individuals. There was a, this is years ago, probably before my time even, at the university, there's the gym, there was an MOU at the, the gym on campus, the basketball court, that eventually more sports were being tied up into it, being utilized. I think there was an MOU with the city at one point, that the, the community could use it. And of course, as it, over the years, that hasn't been the case. So if you can, because-
I, I, that, that may be the case. I don't, I don't know about that. I, that may be the case, but I'm not aware.
And that, that was two individuals that have been around much longer than I have as well. So, and then another question is, any donations or money put towards it, this project? How much will be put towards the foundation or endowments, and, and how much will go towards the project?
My belief is that any contribution from the county would go toward the building itself. But again, we're trying to raise enough, enough, oh, oh, so, but, but, oh, I see what you're saying. Would it, would the, would the foundation charge its, its fee for that contribution?
Correct.
I don't know, we haven't thought about that, but-
That's disgusting, there's a no.
Okay.
We did it the last time, the money was given.
On the Sanford Sports Complex, the endowment waived the, the contribution fee? That is correct. So, so when a private, in order to run a foundation, there are certain expenses. When a private donor makes a donation, a small, very small, not nearly as large as people think, a very small portion of that goes towards the expense of the foundation. But the foundation would waive a fee. We're gonna also, later today, we're gonna be making as, the same ask of the city, and the foundation would waive its fee for those, if those contributions or that support is received.
You made a comment about the county being up here and the other people lower, lower, however you said it. We are, the county is, we represent all those lower people, you know? And so, I mean, the only thing that I ever worry about is public access. And as your use of it grows, public access will probably decline. I mean, even, even now, in the old, old place where Roughriders used to be, it got difficult for the public to be able to use it. You just had one event here, you know, it's the one, only one that I have here, when Nathan wanted to do his rodeo, and he got, you know, says, no, we're having archery in there, and he'd had his event all planned out. So, and I mean, it's a great event, I'm not knocking the whole concept here, but I'm just looking at, for the public, I, I struggle with it. I mean, we supported the BAC, we supported the Sanford Field, we supported the CTI, all great projects that help a good, solid percentage of our community. And I, I struggle with where any commitment from us here will be, have that same value.
Things do change over time. I mean, I'm, and I'm not, and I'm not here as a snake oil salesman. I mean, I, I mean, I mean, things do change over time. But I, I believe that this is a facility that there are significant numbers of hours in the week, and, and then summer months, when Dickinson State is unlikely to have substantial use of that facility. Could that change over time? I won't, I won't stand here and say it can't.
There's no crystal ball.
Pardon? Yeah, but, but, but it's, but it's, the Sanford Sports Complex, as soon as the grass is ready to go on the soccer fields, and we know that all four of the softball fields will be used, and there will be members of our, of our community on that, on that field, hours and hours.
It's gonna be a great, great addition to our community. I told them, we supported it, you know, with a good dollar amount.
And I, and I, there is room for that in this facility. Could things change over time? I, that's always, that's always possible.
And you know, we just struggled at the meeting, when you guys sat through our other meeting, you know, we struggled at making our own commitment to our own facility. And so now I would struggle in the other direction. You know, that's just my own personal feelings. And I, I mean, if we don't have an honest, personal conversation, then it's, then it's not right.
Yes. I mean, I mean, the, there's a lot of room in the schedule for, for others to use the facility. But part of that gets worked out in the MOU. And I, and I'm, I'm a very frank person, right? I mean, it's, it's, it's the Dickens, it will be an arena on Dickinson State's campus. But I really think there's a lot, I mean, I'm, yes, it's a Dickinson State, it's Dickinson State real estate, it's Dickinson State facility. But there's a lot of room in the weekly schedule for, for other events, and a lot of room in the yearly schedule for other events. I, I really feel confident of that. I, I, I really feel confident of that.
One of the things you just said was, you have to make a decision fairly quick on the size of the box. And so, probably two questions here. Number one, is this a facility that could be staged over time where you do things? And number two, uh, I think the worst-case scenario here would be is if, as you know, we just funded, uh, or tried starting funding, uh, a facility down at Fairgrounds, if for some reason that wasn't successful, and then your, uh, facility comes in and being a smaller facility, then, then there's nowhere to hold an indoor rodeo event, you know? So, uh, I think we obviously need time here to hash this out, because we did, like Bernie said, it took us a long time to, to agree to what we were doing down, or trying to support down on our own facility, but, uh, I, I do see potential here. I, I would wish, uh, all the luck and, and get all the vision to, to take place. So that, that's, that was my question, is can you build a box and not do the locker rooms and not do the, uh, the entryway?
Could, could we go to the, the slide just before this last one? Because I, it's a very reasonable, oh, it isn't the one just before, it's the one with the Xs on it. There we go. Uh, so, first of all, I want to be clear that at $18 million, we will be building a facility that's, that's large enough to host a rodeo. What it doesn't have, and what as a practical matter, it makes it very difficult to attract winter rodeos, is the warm-up space. There is competi, so it's not what we have currently, which is too small to host a competition with spectators. What you're talking about is that, is, or what I'm talking about is that second rectangle with the big X on it, that's your warm-up space. I'm gonna answer your question in terms of, what if you end up somewhere between $18 million and $25 million? And then I will get back to staging. If, if, if you end up somewhere between $18 million and $25 million, what alternatives will go? I would say the number one alternative, from what we've heard from, uh, the rodeo community, if we get from 18 to 21, or 21 and a half million dollars, then you build that second rectangle, and you don't put locker rooms in it, but you have all of that as essentially warm-up space, except for whatever stalls you build, the stalls aren't, the stalls aren't incredibly expensive. So that'd be the first thing you'd want on top, uh, in my, in my analysis, that you would want on top of the basic space. The second thing would probably be, uh, replacing the exterior siding. Everyone in the community that hears about this project says, you gotta upgrade the look, um, it just doesn't, it just doesn't look good now with that yellow siding. Uh, next, I think, uh, so the third thing on the list would be, and, and that's a, um, the siding is 700, I can't remember what the figure exactly is, but something in the neighborhood of $700,000 to, to improve the siding. Uh, the next thing I think you would do is moving the exterior wall, so that those pens are inside. I think that would be, I mean, we're in a city, you know? It is, it is the side of the building away from the closest neighborhood, but still, it would be much better to have that. So I think that would be next. And then, uh, further down the line, as much as I'd love that viewing deck, and I think it would really enhance the facility as a community facility, I think that one's down the line, and probably last on the list are those locker rooms. And so that's the priority. Now, staging, um, that's, hasn't proven very successful in Dickinson State's past. In a sense, we're here now 44 years after the initial construction of the building to get to the second stage. Fundraising, after you have a facility up, to improve the facility is really tough. It's, 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 it's just easier to energize people about, you know, here's what we could do if you give us the funds. Uh, it's just a tough, it's a tough fundraising project. Now, if we don't get all of these things, will we keep hoping for them in the future? Yes, but probably not. Probably what we build realistically will be the facility we have for 10 to 20 years after that, because fundraising is tough for an existing facility.
One last question, I've heard a couple of comments, uh, having, or visited with the city on the relaxation of livestock rules, or, um, I'm being told, uh, and I haven't vouched this or verified it, is that I'm being told that you can't keep animals in city limits overnight, and if you're gonna hold a two-day rodeo event, you would have to work through those details.
Well, and I want to be, uh, yes, if we have, if we have an overnight rodeo, we're, the, the, the participants are gonna have to find somewhere else to stay overnight. Again, we've had a great relationship with the county, which is hosting our current rodeo, and there's space out there, but yes, no, there's no way, I don't see any possibility that we would be, uh, authorized to have all of those, we, well, there's nowhere for them to be anywhere on our campus. We would have to, we would have to make arrangements, hopefully with the county, continuing a good relationship with the county, to have people out there, or even Kildare, Midora's considering building a new, a, a new rodeo facility, places like that. But yes, that, it's, I don't think it's anywhere in the cards to have that sort of moving campground that comes with a rodeo in town. That's gonna have to go somewhere else. And I should, you mentioned, I, I, I want to be clear that this is, this is not a long-term boarding facility for Dickinson State student athletes' horses. That, again, I, that, that's not really possible in a city. Might we see if the city would let us keep those horses overnight from Wednesday to when you take off Thursday morning? I mean, we might talk to them about, but that's an occasional thing. This is not long-term boarding for, um, for, for our horses. That still will have to be done elsewhere in the community, or more specifically, the county. Thank you very much. We've taken a lot of your time. We appreciate, again, thank you for your support of the Sanford Sports Complex. I will just end by saying, I really do believe this is a facility that's gonna have a lot of community uses. It is not, and it is not the same facility that you're, that you're, that you're talking about, and I, and I do recognize that, that Dickinson State is going to use up a chunk of this, uh, of this time that's available in this facility, but I'm absolutely convinced that there'll be a lot of opportunities for other community members to use it. Thank you very much, we appreciate the time.
Thank you.
Okay. Any other discussion before we move on to the next topic, or?
Hi, um-
Uh, excuse me, we have agenda to-
Oh, sorry, go ahead.
Did you need something, or?
Are you guys gonna say I, or, I'm not sure?
What's that?
Not sure. I just wanted to speak, I guess.
If you have something at the end, we can bring you up here if you want, okay?
At the end?
Yes.
Sure.
Okay. Okay, let's do this. City of Dickinson Renaissance Zone Extension, Slade of Support for the City.
Good morning, Commissioners, I'm Josh Skuzacik, Engineering Community Development Director for the City of Dickinson. Uh, before you today is the, uh, Ren Zone Extension, so this would be a 10-year extension to the, to the already existing Renaissance Zone with the city. In this case, there would be two options for the Renaissance Zone. Previously, there was only a five-year option. Uh, there is now, based on the, the recent passing of the Renaissance Zone from the state level, there's an eight-year option that has certain financial, uh, requirements associated with that, and those, those would be reviewed by city staff, uh, before moving forward. Uh, one other thing, I mean, city practices historically, and what we intend to communicate and, and move forward with going forward, is that this is just a freeze at the current property tax level. It would not be a, a full vacation of property taxes for this duration or anything like that. It would be a, a freeze during these five or eight-year durations. And then ultimately, from our approval standpoint, uh, these are reviewed at both Planning and Zoning Commission from the city standpoint, and City Commission for final approval. And then, uh, we do, we already presented this at, uh, the school district, um, Dickinson Public Schools at their board meeting, and, uh, we did get a letter of support from Dickinson Public Schools. And we would supply a, uh, draft version of the letter that has, uh, certain things in there as far as, uh, key criteria for the 10-year extension, the five and eight-year options, and, uh, that are available through the state. So, uh, with that being said, I'd happy to, uh, answer any questions you may have, as well as Mr. Steven Josephson, uh, who works, um, uh, part-time with the city, is available to, um, to support any, any answers that you may have, to any questions.
Any questions?
So the, the geographical boundaries do not change, we're just doing an extension here?
That's correct.
Can the geographical boundaries be changed during the term of the extension?
During the term of-
So three years from now, if, if for some reason we want to extend the Ren, or the city wants to extend the Renaissance Zone, is that an allowable action, or is that restricted once the extension is signed?
Prefer that, Steven.
Okay, um, no, there, Commissioner Messer, um, as, as Josh said, I do serve as the Renaissance Zone Coordinator when I'm over at the city. They will not be able to expand the number of blocks, they are at their maximum number under the Sentry Code. However, they could rearrange them, you know, if they believe that there's some areas that are unproductive, or there's no more development potential there, they could in the future, they could in the future rearrange those blocks.
Okay.
With the idea that once a block is taken out, it can't, it can't come back in. And one thing I did want to note for the Commissioners is, is the city recently approved a Renaissance Zone project, um, in that island. It's the, um, it's where the old supermarket used to be, and that's gonna be where, um, where, uh, half of it, we know, they know for certain is gonna be, um, it's gonna be the, um, Harbor Freight, you know, Harbor Freight, and I think the other half, they were talking about being a, a retail, a retail outlet. So that was just recently approved by City Commission and given conditional approval by the state.
So what's the formula for, it said, uh, you said that the, um, s- state statute dictates the size of the Renaissance Zone?
Right, it's based upon your census, it's based upon the census. So for every, if there was, there was a census done recently, where, um, the city was able to add two more blocks in, it's every, there was a base number, plus for every 5,000 over that base number, you can add a block.
Okay.
The other thing I just wanted to make clear, I think, you know, Mr. Skuzacik referred to this, is, is according to the Department of Commerce, and this was an opinion they got from the Attorney General, is any letter of support has to specifically reference that new, the new requirement for the Renaissance Zone that's, for the Sentry Code that says that the city has the ability, has the ability to, to give an eight-year, you know, eight-year project, project, uh, maximum, if the, uh, if the project is at least 75% of the investment of the, of the assessed value. It doesn't mean the city's gonna do that automatically, but apparently that has to be in the letter.
And you said this is coming in front of the city, or you've been in front of the city with this?
We've been to the school board, school board, but we've been talking to the Planning and Zoning Commission for the city about this, so they're, they are, they are aware of it, and also the Renaissance Zone got amended, uh, a few months back to include those new provisions in the, the, those new provisions in the Sentry Code.
So is it the city needing a letter of support from us?
Yes.
For, uh, 10-year renewal?
Right.
Okay.
And what was the reason that this new area was brought in? What, I mean, why did you decide that you wanted to go up to that north up there and bring that into the Renaissance Zone?
That was, the, the city has the ability to, to-
They have that, but I was just wondering what was special about that area up there?
The decision was, was made that that area was blighted, and there were vacant, you had, you had the vacant store there, so it was an area that was in need of, a need of revitalization.
Good. So did we give, I mean, did you give, you, you said, in order to add, you have to delete? What was deleted to do the Harbor Freight site?
They, oh, they removed a couple of, no, you know what, those were brand-new ones.
That was actually, I'm sorry, I read the map wrong. It goes all the way up to 21st Street, so my bad.
Those were brand, those were brand-new ones. Yeah, that, and those were added in after the census came out, it, after the 2020 census came out, and they had two extra blocks, and there was discussion where there, those were gonna be added on, and the decision was made to add in that area.
Yep, okay, okay. So why would we go for the long extension versus, I, I guess what I'm trying to do is give us flexibility, give the city flexibility. Why would we go for the longer extension, uh, versus one of the shorter options that's out there? Just educate me, because I don't care, but I'm just thinking-
Are they doing this because the census is only done 10, every 10 years, or?
No, it's because, in the past, the way the Sentry Code was written was you could only, once your 15-year period was over, you could extend it five-year increments, but the Sentry Code was changed, so if you wanted to keep it going, it's a 10-year, it's a 10-year, um, extension of the zone. No, there's not an option of extending it either to five years or 10 years, it's a, it's a 10-year extension of the zone.
And that's the only option?
That's the option, yeah.
Okay, so that has changed since 2019, where it says in 2019, we did a five-year extension to go in 2024?
Right, when the Sentry Code was changed, was changed a, a couple of years back, it, it allowed the cities to ask for a 10-year extension, because otherwise, they kept coming back every five years, and apparently that, the Department of Commerce had received feedback from the cities that participate in this program, you know, requesting that the extension be for, for 10-year periods.
Okay, thank you.
You'll be providing the letter with the actual criteria you need, and then, okay. Okay, I'll look for a motion then.
I'll move, I'll move, we sign that extension.
Letter, letter of support, okay.
For support.
Yep, I'll sign, I'll second that.
Motion to second, all in favor, state aye.
Aye.
Opposed, opposed, motion carried. Okay, next we go to the Planning and Zoning then.
Thank you, Chairman Franchak, Commissioner Steve Josephson, County Planner. There was a Planning and Zoning Commission meeting held on March the 28th. There were two applications, and they are, they're both for the same piece of property. The first one was rezoning RZ 0224, and that was Justin Hague was requesting a rezoning from agriculture to agricultural residential, and that's in, uh, that's in Section 5 Township 140, Range 95. It's described legally, described as tract one in parts of government lots 2 and 7, it's about 20, 28, 5.515 acres. Both the Planning and Zoning Commission and staff recommend approval, and I'm here to answer any questions you may have.
Any questions? He already owns a piece of property, he's purchasing it a little bit to the east of it to add on, because it's better access to where he wants to build.
Right, his current property, much of that is in the 100-year flood plain, so it makes it easier to do his road.
His road would be along a cliff.
Purchasing that property to the-
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I would move to approve application of Justin Hague for RZ 02-24, rezoning, uh, parcel of land in Township 140 North, Range 95 West, Section 5, from agricultural to agricultural residential.
Have a motion, have a second.
I'll second that.
Have a second, any other discussion? Not, we'll call vote, then Commissioner Clares.
Aye.
Commissioner Messer.
Aye.
Commissioner Marsh.
Aye.
Commissioner White.
Aye.
Chair, will it's a motion carried.
Thank you, the second one is, is, um, MSP 0124. Mr. Hague is requesting approval of a minor subdivision plant of the Russian Spring Creek subdivision. The property is legally described as tract one, and part of government lots, government lots 2 and 7 of Section 5 Township 140, Range 95. Again, this is related to the previous one that you approved- Again, this is related to the previous one that you approved, and this would create the, that would create the Russian Spring Creek subdivision. The applicant wanted to put his house, I think you can see it, there's a little square on the southern portion of it, um, and, you know, planting the two together, he'd be able to provide access all the way down without going through any, any, um, any floodplain area. So, uh, both the Planning and Zoning Commission and staff recommended approval, and I'm here to answer any questions you may have.
Any questions? Not, I'll look for a motion then.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I would move to approve, uh, MSP 0124, application of Justin Hague, uh, creating the minor subdivision or Russian Spring Creek subdivision, uh, containing its tract one and parts of government lots two and seven of Section 5 Township 140 North, Range 95 West.
Okay, you have a motion, have a second.
Second.
Second, any other discussion? Not, roll call vote, then Commissioner Clares.
Aye.
Commissioner White.
Aye.
Commissioner Marsh.
Aye.
Commissioner Messer.
Aye.
Chair votes aye, motion carried.
Thank you, I'll notify the applicant this morning, thank you very much.
Okay, thanks. Next we have a motor grade release for the Speedway. Motion to sign this lease.
I'm making motion for you to be able to sign the lease.
Okay, have a motion, have a second.
I'll second.
Second, all in favor, state aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, motion carried. Next we have a quick claim deed for Hagan Football Field. It's being sold from the city, uh, city park, or I should say, city school district is selling that to, there, and they would need us to sign off on this to clear title. I'm sure Mr. Messer, I can explain this clearly, more clear with, with a quick claim deed.
I would say at some point in history, there was a, Stark County had an interest in this property, and since it's, since it's been in the school district forever, uh, I'm sure the title company wants that cloud on the title removed, is what it looks like to me. 1934.
So this is just a curative matter?
Twenty year.
Right.
Yeah, wouldn't that work? But, but that's fine, I, I'll move that we authorize you to sign this.
Okay, our motion to sign the quick claim deed, have a second.
Second.
Have a second, any other discussion? Not, roll call then, Commissioner Messer.
Aye.
Commissioner Clares.
Aye.
Commissioner Marsh.
Aye.
Commissioner White.
Aye.
Chair votes aye, motion carried. Next we go to the June primary, 2024 polling locations and times.
So, for the, excuse me, for the June primary, um, these are what I came up with for our polling locations and hours and dates for early vote center hours, um, Election Day, and absentee is listed here as well, but absentee is, doesn't really change. There were some changes with the polling locations. We normally have the BAC as one of our polling locations, but unfortunately for the primary, um, somebody booked their wedding on Monday before the primary. So, we will be at the ballroom, um, at the student center. We're going to put out lots of signage to show that it's changed, and actually the setup will work just fine, especially since there's no students there. And we'll have two entrances, the north and the south entrance for parking. And I, I think we can make that work very well for the, for the primary. Obviously, for the, the general election, that wouldn't work because it would be full of college students. So that's what I'm proposing for our, you know, one of our main sites, is the student center ballroom. And then, also, I have, um, our own Dakota room that we will be utilizing over there. I did not realize that there was a second exit door in the access, so that kind of solves people being able to go in and out without going through the same door. And we are looking at using the Dakota room for Election Day, and then also for early voting. The nice thing is, it's, it's, it's our building, we're able to secure it. Minimal issues with any sort of moving stuff around. And, um, but we did shorten the early vote for the primary, um, to the fifth, sixth, seventh, and eighth, so early voting will be Wednesday through Saturday. Mainly do, to, we do not have near as many voters in the primaries as we do at, at the general election, the general election, we can extend back. But for the primary, we were just going to do five days. Does anybody have any questions on that?
Any questions? If not, I'll look for a motion to approve the location and hours.
I move that we accept the primary election polling locations and hours that has been presented. I'll second.
Motion to second, any other discussion? All in favor, state aye.
Aye.
Aye, those opposed, motion carried. Next we have out of state travel for Human Resource Director.
Good morning, Commissioners, Joetta Piercey, Human Resources Director. I have two out of state travel requests, they both happen to fall in June. The first one is June, I would travel June 3rd for a conference in Denver, Colorado, the 4th and the 5th. This is a specific HR conference for state and local government, and, um, I had just gotten good reviews from it, from Desi Callahou from Dunn County, and she is presenting at it this year, so I thought that would be a good one to attend. I did not budget for this one. The second one is to go to the National SHRM Conference in Chicago, Illinois. I did budget for this, um, I'm able to do that within my budget if I volunteer at the conference and don't have to pay any of the, um, fees to get into it. So, um, that one, I would actually be out of the office for three days on that one. Any questions?
Any questions?
Um, yeah, uh, I, I think first blush from me is, uh, kind of make you pick one or the other. The, uh, I, I, I guess, you know, we're all for improving and, uh, you know, talents and those kind of thing, but, uh, I just, uh, I'm just wondering, big picture, long term, you know, if we, we allow, uh, department heads to attend multiple, uh, conferences every year, um, that kind of thing, so, uh, that's, that's my comment and question, so I don't know what your feedback on that would be, Joanna?
I just know the, I, that, that would be fine. I, I, I asked Dean if it would be appropriate to bring both forward, knowing that you might have that pushback, and he said, well, you know, we can ask if that would be appropriate, so.
I don't know what the other thoughts are, but if you had to pick, what would you pick?
Uh, I would probably choose the National SHRM Conference that I budgeted for anyway, so.
We need a motion, what are we doing here?
Yeah, I would think so.
Look for a motion, let's.
I would agree with you, Neil, uh, I would, I'd make the motion to approve the out of state travel for the Chicago Conference, um, June 22nd.
Okay, I have a motion, have a second.
Do you want to put the cost, estimated cost in there? You have money in that, so you've budgeted.
She's got $2,000 budgeted, right?
I'll second that then.
Do you have a motion and second, any other discussion?
So I'm assuming, Joetta, the other one that you were asking about, that you were asking from that, the fund that we had?
For the grant money that you had gotten, yes.
Okay, I was just curious if that's, because this is our form for that, correct?
Yes, yeah, we just combined it into this, out of state travel, yeah.
Okay. That's all I had, sorry.
Okay. All in favor, state aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carried. And we have a special event alcohol permit.
I know we, we do the approval of the other permits, but, um, the commission is still blessed with the alcohol permit. So, um, we have the, some events that are happening at our Speedway, and the Esquire is requesting approval to, um, for a special permit, and they will be paying, you know, we do charge per event, so it's $25 per event, and they have one, two, three, four, it looks like eight events, so it'll be a $200 fee, and I guess I'm just looking for the commission to approve their application for their special permit to sell alcoholic beverages.
We, we approved this one last year as well, correct?
Yeah.
So I'll make the motion to approve the special event alcohol permit of $200 for the Speedway.
And Bernie, you should probably abstain from voting on this one.
Okay, I have a motion, have a second.
I have a question, um, so I know on other public facilities, for example, the golf course and Legacy Square, they'd, they would do like, I don't know how that worked, Bernie, educate me, but they request proposals from all, so is, did you have to do a proposal to get this, or does Speedway come to you, how's that all work?
Three years ago, I think South Art had it, and they, after that year, they didn't want it anymore, and Speedway came and asked us if we wanted it, so that's, it's never been any other way. If any, but if you'd want it, it would need to be done pretty quick, because from here I have to go to the state to get their permission for it, and if that's maybe in the future that, it needs to be on a.
Well, you, we would have heard if other people wanted to do business down there, or, I mean, I don't know, I'm just trying to.
I mean, nobody's ever asked me any questions about it, other than, you know, we, we, Speedway came to us and asked us and.
So since the Speedway leases, um, right, they, Southwest, they leased that area from them, does that kind of let them make the decision on who they have out there?
I don't.
Even though it's.
I would tend to agree with that, I guess I didn't think about that, it's their deal.
If, if there's no pushback, I'm, I'm no problem, I just want to get it out there, and I'll, you know, I'll gladly second the motion if, if that's where we're at, so.
Well, I, I legitimately am curious about that. Amanda, would you know, since they lease it, what did they, they make those decisions, correct?
Whoever they want to.
Yeah, off the top of my head, I'd say they have.
I don't think so.
Yeah. Okay.
Even at the fairgrounds, I mean, there's some events that we do, there's some other, uh, events, other people apply for them out there, so it's whoever, but I mean, like I said, I'm open to game whichever way you want to do it.
Okay. I think we had a motion, but I don't know, second.
I did second.
You did second, okay. Any other discussion? Okay, all in favor, state aye.
Aye.
Aye, those opposed, motion carried. Anything else I missed on the agenda?
Well, it's actually not an agenda, Al just brought this to my attention, we were discussing, and I don't know if we want to have this, how long this might go, Al, but there's been some discussion about section lines and roads. We've got an application in front of us, I think, uh, well, not necessarily an application, there's an oil company that is looking at drilling some wells, and he's wanting to use public right of way, um, uh, going down the section line, and, and there's been some discussion whether or not, or how much input the county should have in the building of those roads, uh, because unfortunately, we would sometimes inherit those roads, don't we, Al? And I think initially, we had this conversation that where we get in trouble, I think sometimes, is when we build the roads, and then someone builds a house alongside those section lines, and then those folks just automatically feel like the county should pick up the tab and start blading those roads and moving snow, and, and then Al has a problem, because the roads aren't wide enough, and they're not built to any spec, and it becomes a little bit of a mess for us, and, uh, so we, you know, a little visit with, uh, Amanda about this, trying to figure out, you know, an easier way for, to, um, you know, basically foster business, we don't want to, we don't want to, uh, you know, stymie business, and, uh, and I have to tell you, Al, that, uh, you know, in some ways, I'm not sure how we really need to be involved at all. I mean, other than, you know, I, I've built a few oil sites in my day as well, and other than coming off a county road and applying for a, an approach permit, which I think you should, if it's a, if it's a county road, you should have a approach permit, and you've got your specs for that, and I think that's great, um, but, you know, getting in the middle of this, um, in any way, I mean.
There's, there's times they've actually put their road on county section line area, and then people are building out there, and it's not built to the specs, and they're expecting us to maintain it.
But it's really not county section line, it's public right.
You're right.
You know, and, and, and I get it, and that's where the problem comes in, it's like, now, people just automatically assume, since they built a road off of that, that oil field road, that they're going to get some maintenance or some services, which the county never agreed to that road in the first place, they never put a penny towards it, and, uh, nor got in the planning of it, most likely, and now they, you know, so.
If it wouldn't be built to our specs, we'd be more inclined to take it over and maintain it, and, you know, somewhere down the line, if it's not built to our specs, there's no reason we should. Well, and what I see out there mainly is a lot of these, they're, they're lease roads, they'll come off the county road, make their own lease road, and, and I think that's more fair, and then they have the agreements with landowner and whatever, and then the county don't maintain any of that, so whether, the maintenance usually comes from a farmer, or somebody, the, the oil and gas operator has employed.
Where we getting, I mean, to build that road, depending on, I mean, if you just have a flat piece of ground, it's not that big a deal probably to, to build it to a county spec. You think you can build it in that 66 feet? If you have any, you know, any terrain issues whatsoever, you won't get it built in the 66 feet. You know, you did have a good idea, Al, as far as if we were to get involved in any way, just maybe discuss with?
That, that was my biggest concern, you know, in order, just a whis, if two people pass, it's safe to pass. If it has no ditches, and every time the wind blows, it blocks with snow, but where this particular site is at, it's behind that big disposal, that's, that, uh, contaminated disposal site south of Bellfield, there'll never be a house go up back there, the section line dead ends, it doesn't go through, it's a two-track veil, and, and I get it, the oil company doesn't want to build a, uh, spend a half million dollars on a road with the amount, and even make an oil well, but I guess if it's safe to pass, and the ditches are just enough to make the drainage, that, that's one thing, but, you know, I just, it always brings me back to the issue we have over, you know, further west. It was an oil well site 10 years later, now it's a full-blown housing development with the substandard road. I don't believe it'll ever happen out there, it's just not in the cards, but.
That's seven miles east, or south and east of Bellfield.
Yep.
If you don't want it to happen, it will happen. Two miles.
Well, I mean, so that's why we need a direction, I mean, I, I don't think it should be built to full standard, because it's just going to be a waste of resources and, and land and right of way, so, but.
I'd agree.
I, I did talk to Williams County, they'll, I think it'll, it's kind of on a case-by-case basis, and I think they'll put, they put a sign at the beginning road, like, oh, you know, no oil field road, no minimal maintenance or something, just to kind of.
From everyone on notice.
Right. And I think this is going to happen, I think it's just when frost comes out to spring, these, these people are going to want to drill that well back there, and I guess if they want to drill well in Stark County, make oil, well, that's great, but I don't really think it needs to be a full 24 foot white top, four foot ditches and 16 foot ditch bottom, and verbiage, that takes humongous right of way, you ain't going to get in 66 feet.
I think that we're, the concern sometimes is, is consistency, we just need to stick, whatever we're going to do, do, and stay with that, because I think that's, if something's, you know, it's, it's, you can never make it, everybody happy about this whole situation, right? So.
Well, I think we give Al discretion, I mean, he's hands-on, he's, he's the first line of sight in that regard, and, and if, if we give him discretion from the commission, then he knows what, uh, what to do, and, and if it has to be a readdress somewhere down the road, maybe we, you know, amend that, but I, at this point, I, I would, like I said, I would agree, trust your judgment, but have a consistent policy.
My biggest concern is that two people can pass fairly comfortable, not just a one-lane road, so, okay, we'll take care of it.
Thanks, Al.
Okay, you can go ahead with your comments.
My name's Gonzalo Franco Jr., and, uh, I'm a little concerned about my safety here in, uh, Stark County, and, uh, pretty much would like to ask for my rights back, because I'm not able to do anything here, I can't get a job. Yeah, pretty much I just want my rights back, and, uh, I, I see you guys have spoken a lot about it, so I really don't know. I just do have a problem with a lot of the RF, ICD codes and stuff that you guys are managing, and access into buildings, and how you guys govern. And access into buildings and how you guys govern, your government. Employees don't properly conduct business. Is how I'd first start.
Is there a certain problem you have or?
I do have a problem and that's with court allegations and court proceedings.
Gonzalo, that's completely separate from the commission and we addressed it yesterday at your hearing and you need to talk to an attorney about what's happening.
I'll stop you right there, okay, so I'll ask, I'll ask you guys if I could get a grant for two million then. That's all I need.
Do you have like a project that you'd like to?
Yes, I do have a project, a marijuana store, medical marijuana. Totally professional, we already have one here, it's up by Walmart, I built it, I helped build it. Easy, to bring more money, we'll get it built, it'll stay here. I don't know, kind of a bad propositioner, but.
Well, I think number one, the legislature has kind of dictated the availability of, of the, of the stores. And if, I'm gonna stand corrected, but I believe our community is, is limited to one. And if you do have a business plan that works, it, it wouldn't start here with the county commission, it would start with some local business development. Stark Development is an excellent resource.
I have tried that.
Okay, and what have they told you? I'm on the board, but I don't get into details a lot of time with Ryan, but.
Yeah, I don't know, I got calls from some people and it didn't go too well.
Okay.
So.
So you, you feel your violation of the rights is your inability or your restrictive ability to open up a store that you'd like to do?
I just feel like if things keep going the way they're going, it's not gonna end well. It's just gonna be tough because I'm homeless right now and I have money. And it's difficult for me to find a good place to live.
Can't work here?
I don't want to work here. Everybody knows me.
Do you want to start a business here, but you don't want to work here, is that what you're saying?
I'd rather start my own business where I'm managing it than work for somebody who's, who knows me and is gonna boss me around and treat me like the same, the same way.
Like I said, you have to start with, you know, grants, you're gonna have to go through the state or whatever, or, you know, through the programs there, but we, we can't give you a grant or that.
Our grants go through Stark County Development, that's, you said you've already talked to him, so I don't know where you go from there.
Okay. Any other else, where you got your comment from the public? Not to look for a motion adjourned. Okay.
You good?
Yeah.
I, I'm not sure that we're, we're the place you need to come to. That there's other avenues out there, if you want to start a business, I think we align if there's Stark County Development.
I understand, I understand.
Okay.
I understand.
Thanks for your comments.
Thank you guys.
Thank you.
Hi, Carla Arthod, Stark County resident. I listened to Mr. Easton and I just have one question, when we went and did the donation for the softball diamonds. It was contingent on JPA being written that all the small schools in Stark County would have use of that softball diamond. And we talked about it at the meeting and Ty Orton and Pete Stanton were here. And they agreed that they would meet with Amanda and they would write up a JPA. And did that ever happen? Why?
I don't know, I, I guess I don't remember the meeting, I have to look at the meetings, but nobody's ever contacted me about it, so I don't know.
Are the small schools supposed to like softball?
Yeah, you know, with like small schools like Southheart, Bellfield, because I had heard that one of the small schools asked to use it. Because they were having some problems with, you know, wanting to have a softball game for the girls in the summer. And DSU declined.
Well, I've, I've seen, I can't remember which school, I drive in to the community center, I, I've, I saw a high school softball game, non Dickinson High, that last spring up there. So I, I, I agree with you, I mean, it was, because we're gonna have the state softball tournament here next year.
Yep.
And I agree that that was the understanding that if it's available, these schools get to use it.
Yep, because we were gonna hold off the donation at that meeting and they asked, they were like, if you would just do the donation, we will get with Amanda right away and do the JPA.
Well, we can ask, we can ask.
I don't, don't think it's been denied, I think the fee was too high, they didn't want to pay the fee, that, that's what I heard.
Well, that's why the, with the JPA, they were not gonna charge the small schools.
But there's still a, there's still a maintenance fee, I guess, they were starting out, I tried, I tried to get hold of some of the people on the board to see what the fee is, but I haven't found that out yet.
Well, that's my only question, but I mean, the understanding at that meeting that they were gonna have use, since this was Stark County, you know, taxpayer funds, that they were gonna have free use of the softball diamonds. You know, because, I mean, the schools, the small schools don't have the funds.
Well, I mean, I don't think even Dickinson High gets free use of it.
I don't know.
They, they, they pay a fee for the maintenance, this is what I'm told.
I think they get the, the actual, like if somebody from like outside came in and used the field, they'd have to pay a fee for the field and then they would also have to pay the maintenance fee. I think that they just charged the schools, just the maintenance, they don't charge them the actual space fee.
Okay.
But.
Well, if Ms. Ingles did, did you reach out to them because they said they would do the JPA?
Yeah, I'll ask, and I don't, do you remember what meeting that was, I'd like to look at the minutes and.
I can, I can find it, because I, I do remember us having that conversation and I know they did come forward, DSU came forward a couple times. But the one where we actually approved the check, I have the date.
Remember it at all, but yeah, I'll refresh my memory and we'll figure something out.
Because we approved five thousand, or five hundred thousand dollars that day.
And that was part of it, was that the school, the access, but I don't know about the fee being waived, yeah.
Any other softball team other than in the county is Bellfield, Southheart, I think.
I, I think.
I said, I just have to refresh my memory on it.
Yeah, okay, thank you.
Yep. Nothing else, then, I'll look for a motion adjourned.
Second.
Motion, all in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carried.